Let's re-adjourn and go on to item number 16, Annual Secretary of the Board Report. Ms. Madrusi.
Thank you very much. At the end of each fiscal year, the district submits an annual secretary of the board report, or we also call it the ASBR, to DESI. This report talks to DESI about all of the detailed explanations of our receipts and expenditures. We break it out by fund, by function, by object. We have to dissect it all sorts of different ways in all aspects of balance. And that's how the state gets the information from us. And so I would like to go over the information in the ASBR. It is due to DESI tomorrow, so it will be signed and approved by you guys tonight hopefully, and then we can send it on up to DESI. I'm sorry, this is really small. I was trying to compress a whole bunch of information onto the screen. But basically what I wanted to do is compare what our ASBR numbers looked like last year as to this year, because this is a very telling piece of information that we've got. As you can see by those numbers, in 11-12, we had, no, we have to take, we actually had a sale bond, so we received a $15 million. But we had a total amount of revenue of $147,390,000. This year, we did not have that $15 million worth of bonds, but we had $124,323,000 of revenue. And expenditures, last year, we expended $45,887,504. And we actually dropped our expenditures this year to $31,667,438. So we had a reduction of revenue, but we also had a reduction of expenditures, which left us a balance of 13.4 percent. So basically, that's all of our funds put together, that's our bond revenue or debt service. So I wanted to break it down to show you the deficit, because I did have a question from one of our board members earlier about the deficit between the two, between the funds from this year. But we were looking at all of the funds. So I just wanted to show you that the operating revenue actually came in at $121 million. The operating expenditures were $129 million. So we had a deficit spending this year of $7.6 million. But again, that's because we had a reduction of revenue. In the local funds alone, we had $4.2 million less, and that's because of our assessed valuation drop and because of the Boeing money that they won their assessment by. We also had $1.1 million less of state revenue, $2.4 million less in federal, with a total of 8.0 percent less of revenue this year than we had prior year. But we also reduced our expenditures by $800,000 this year, so that was really good. So as you can see, our fund balances are still declining. We ended up this year with 13.4. Next year, it's a projection of 9.1. Now, I wanted to talk about the student transfers, because that is going to potentially help our fund balance. I say potentially because we can't count on that money. We are not sure if that money will really, we'll see it. We're assuming that we're going to get it, we're going to try to get it, but if the district dissolves and runs out of money, then we can't count on that money. But at the time that I did this report, we had 394 students enrolled, actually enrolled from transfer students, which would bring in $4.2 million worth of revenue. And we will have some anticipated costs with that and some different things that we're looking at. We will have an increase of $50,000 to the schools. What happens is, we allocate instructional material money out to the schools. So with the additional students that they're receiving, they will receive extra money for instructional materials to help them in their classrooms. And I anticipate that to be $50,000. At this day, today, we have a half of a staff that we've added. However, we won't know the numbers, we still will be looking at the numbers, so that could be increasing. But as of today, it was 32,000. We are also looking at transportation type things. It's a discussion that we're just looking at, so I just put it out there that it would cost 500,000. We are going to take that 4.2 million and make sure that we use it towards the instruction of our kids and making sure that they do achieve. So with the, that anticipated revenue does change our fund balance outlook. So it would go from, it would go up to 13, or I can't even remember my, 11-5?
11-9.
To 11-9, instead of the 9.2. So anyway, that's the picture. We really did actually come in a little bit better than we thought we were going to come in. We didn't receive as much revenue as I anticipated, however, we did do a good job on cutting costs, and we really did try to streamline some things, and we're still continuing to streamline. I talked with the administrators this year, and I told them it's very important to reuse, recycle. You know, there's things that they can do in the classroom that they can, you know, borrow from their neighbors. I told them that we're one big district with one big pot of money. If they're not using something to maybe see if some of the other schools might be able to use it, so that we can try to recycle some great things and reuse some things. I also talked to them about making sure to try to purchase things locally. You know, everybody's on board with this. We're really trying to work as a team, and everybody understands the situation that we're in, and we just need to continue, I will continue to meet with the budget task force committee, and we'll continue to look at different areas that we can streamline and become more efficient, and hopefully this year we'll come in better than we anticipated. Any other questions?
Your motion to accept the annual secretary of the board report?
Still moved.
It's moved by Mrs. Hogsett?
Seconded by Mr. Brown.
Seconded by Mr. Brown. So your discussion?
I just have one question. Do we have a sense of, of the 4.2, maybe I missed, of the timing for that?
I got it. DESI said that they would take it directly from the district's budget if they're two months behind. So we expect monthly payments, and the second that they're two months behind, so October will be the latest. Then DESI will take them out for every two months behind.
Following that question up, at one point, we were owed by both Normandy and Riverview Gardens for homeless transportation. Has that been paid?
No, it has not.
It's only Riverview.
And, and we paid both Riverview and Normandy this month in homeless transportation? We paid them, but they don't pay us?
Let me correct that. That's, it was Riverview that owed us about $35,000. And the bill payment method was behind by, by the time that we had asked it, they did. They were late for three months, but then they made payments at the end of their school year, at the next fiscal budget in July, according to Amy Ketchatory, who sees those. So the payments were delayed, that is correct, in former review, but payments have come in since then. Whether the entire amount is paid, I can't say that I asked that question, but I did get answers that payments were beginning to be made, it was three months later.
That part I don't know. I can...
But I know we paid $14,000 to Riverview in homeless transportation. There's much less to Normandy, but, but we did pay that.
That's true.
And they're not paying us, and we're taking a bunch of their students, so that does raise concern on the financial level.
Well, and theoretically, the big concern, if you've read the paper, is when the, just when these sending districts go bankrupt in 12, 18 months. That's a whole different ballgame. And so the idea of saying, let's really count on that money, I don't think that's a wise thing to do.
And we don't plan on counting on that money.
Yeah. I mean, that's, on paper, it looks good, but I think in practice, it's going to be a real nasty year. That's just my opinion.
What is the state, has the state made comment on the, on the likelihood of them closing?
Yes. All right, so Kristin Castro said on the J.Cole report on this weekend, and she said it in other places too, that, that Normandy will be bankrupt by April of this school year. And then she wrote in a document that's public to legislators to bail them out, and to the legislators' hands or governor's hands to make a fund allocation. But she did make the request. The governor was at O'Toole last night and was asked to him again by the board, and he made no promises. He made no promises. So April is the date, they should be able to make payments up until April. After that, if they're not bailed out, then they will go bankrupt mid-year. If they go bankrupt mid-year, then that triggers the state board being able to dissolve them and force, force a merger with the neighboring district. And it's likely that they will not, that the state board would not use the same method they got Nori, well, that Nori and Welston had. So it's a splitting that's being discussed, more so than the total absorption. That's from one of the state board members.
So can you walk me through the procedure of how we're going to attempt to collect the money from Riverview and Normandy?
For the, for the tuition?
Yes.
We will submit monthly invoices to them. So I will get, we, Amy Ketchatory does a really great job of making sure that those numbers are updated daily, because we've got people coming in 15 at a time still. So we will be submitting invoices to those districts, and then just calling and, you know, we can just, we can like collectors, I guess, and try to collect the funds. But we will be submitting invoices monthly to them, based on, and it's based on the numbers of enrollment at that time.
So there's no, you know, like your bank account FDIC insured, the state hasn't said, hey, we'll make it good?
I think the state is going to try to make it good.
Yes.
If they don't pay within two months, then they're going to give us the, give us the funds, right?
But, but they're only going to give you the state funds, they're not going to give you the local funds, because they have no control over that.
No, that's not, that's not accurate. They will give direct funds from their budget for all of it, because the state is...
They'll take it out of their state?
They'll take it out, they'll take it all out of the state, but they'll give the total amount they owe. Because the state runs Riverview, it's a state-appointed board, state-appointed, so they got total control there, state-funded.
So is it correct that if, let's say, the state fund is a dollar, and that Riverview owes us, or the, what Riverview owes us is $2, and the state fund is a dollar?
Right.
If the state gives us the $2, is it true that that would accelerate the timeframe for, like, the bank payments?
In the case of Normandy, likely yes. In the case of Riverview, no, because Riverview had, well, it would accelerate, but not a significant difference, so you wouldn't feel it. Because Riverview has 40 percent reserves, so that's enough to take them for two years in their savings account.
How are they counting the students? Are they counting them, like, you're saying you're sending it, you're sending them an invoice on the last day of the month? So is it for the attendance that is on that day, or do you take the attendance for the home month? It's on the enrollment. So, you know, if they... Enrollment for the home? I believe it's on the enrollment, correct?
You're right, you're right.
So what we have is enrollment as of, like, say, the month, is what we would do. But what if you had more enrollment in the middle of the month? Do we get counted for those days too? If the enrollment drops, are we being...
Penciled. You're right, that's a great point.
That is a great question. And I will, and we are talking among the other business officials, other districts we are meeting, and we'll be meeting and talking about how we're going to do it, so that we're kind of consistent across the board.
Right.
So hopefully we'll have it. This is new to all of us, so hopefully we'll get those answers soon.
Yeah, it is new, but that's a great question. The implementation will probably be to DESI's benefit, which is a penalization. But, but what we were told upfront was that we would get paid for students enrolled, and that students should be allowed to shift out, and they should be fixed for one year, and that remains, so that, because otherwise, there's no way for Riverview to predict how many teachers to not lay off or delay off, and same for Normandy, if it doesn't stay fixed.
But we know how transient this whole area is.
That's true.
So in the middle of the month, we may be at 1,200 students, and, and have paid for their education for two weeks, and then the last day of the month, we may be at 600 students. Right. So I think we average it out, or do we... And I'm just using those numbers.
Right.
That's a great point.
It is. We would definitely reiterate, we were just on the phone with Ron Langford. There's a September 15th enrollment cutoff for what the official enrollment of our district is, and I know that, well, our funding is largely based off of those officials, and that same method will be used, that where that month will be more important than many other months. But, but as far as for the month-to-month, you're right. I think on the flip side, though, many families will withdraw from possibly mail field because of the duration of the length of time to ride, waking up at 5:30, and then they will, they may be too fatigued, and they will come to us. I was just on the phone today, I guess publicly safe, with Kate Costas, and she asked the question of, basically saying, would you have the ability to do 40, 50 more kids, and maybe even up to 120 more kids for that reason alone of the duration of the time, just being one that makes people sick, ill, and one that leave there? So for us, and they're asking for us, because it's so close, they are also asking for Rockwood and Parkway, but no transportation, so it's not possible to get there. So we may have upward fluctuation, not downward, based off of that, that indication.
And the other thing I just remembered too, is, and I don't think I told you this, we contacted the Title I people, because we also get pre-reduced money, we get Title I money based on the pre-reduced numbers. And so I contacted DESI and asked them, will that funding follow us if those people are enrolled in our school district? And they said that yes, they will be adjusting our allocations upward for the pre-reduced students that we get from the other districts. So we will see a little bit of money coming in from the federal dollars. So that is a...
Which was not a part of the 4.2.
Right. Right. And I don't know what the allocations are going to look like. She just said that they're going to be looking at that, she being pet from Kaiser from DESI, said that they will be looking at those allocations once everything, the debt settles. So that's just a...
If the scenario you just pointed out happens, then, then we're still not providing bus income, and they're not providing bus income to us. These would be individual, 125 individual parents bringing their children here.
That's correct.
With that said, is there going to be, because we seem to do very well on attendance?
Yes, very well.
Is there going to be any breakdown? And I would like a breakdown. If we lose that, lose that, I would like to know, because I, I mean, as a parent, it would be a burden on me to drive my children, you know, way across somewhere else. I can't even, there's no way I could guarantee I'd get them there on time every day.
Right.
For reasons of my own and reasons of traffic that I don't control. So I'd definitely like a breakdown to see how well these parents are doing.
Right.
That, that would be really useful. And plus, I think it, maybe it's something to go back to the state, you know? I mean, if they try to take that away from us, well, we lost it because...
Right, right.
You know, what the heck? I mean, we're willing to, but, we're willing to, you know, we want to teach these kids. You know, it's not the kids.
That's exactly right. It's the obstacles for them.
You know, it's the obstacles. I mean, come on. That's one. And the other question I had, kind of, I guess, someone, whether it's related or not, is, is it true that the teachers' contracts have to be finalized by April? Okay, so with this current year scenario, I'm just hypothetically saying this, would Riverview Gardens, would their current classrooms be like 10 to 15? I mean, and what I'm, what I'm meaning, my bigger point here is, this would be a great year for them to possibly get some accreditation. It would be interesting to see how their numbers are at the end of the year, really. Because if their teachers could really have 10 to 15 in a class, because everybody's left, and yet these teachers are under contract, so they can't get rid of the teachers.
Right.
So, you wonder, I know I'm oversimplifying this.
No, you're not.
You wonder where this is going to...
No, you're not.
And if, and if it does point out that they make huge steps, you know, I mean, that should really, just really send a torpedo for public education to the state, federal government and everything about class sizes. So it's going to be interesting to watch their numbers also.
You're right. You're one hundred percent right.
But what's it say if they don't?
Well, that's, that's, thanks, Chris. You're right.
On, on the, on the first point that you mentioned, on the first point, lower budgeting in the pathway made on transportation allows for us to transport the current students only to, I would say, for certain 50 percent level, or stretched 100 percent level. So what does that mean? $500,000 helps to transport 400 kids with a reasonable bus stop being not too far from home. And so, so, because logically, you're exactly right, we cannot allow for transportation to stop from a kid from being present, which then causes us to go below 70 percent on the standards for attendance. Right now, our attendance is high, it's at 95 percent. We've gotten that standard for EMTF4, so that's a checkmark. We've had that, and that was a lot to do. We're, we got that standard for EMTF5. We meet 80 percent of the new standard, 80 percent, which is awesome. So we can't slip, because once you go below 70, that's not accredited anymore, or that's provisional under the new standards, 70 percent. 69 percent of the gold met is provisional, 70 percent of the gold met is accredited, and we're at 80 right now. So that means that we only have 10 points to lose from this venture from, from today. So we're monitoring it every day. The attendance of day one in this school district was amazingly high, and I had to give the, well, parents and students and bus transportation, and now the media credit for putting this on the news every day. We had, we had 99 percent attendance on day one for the kids who were enrolled. So, they all came in. That's amazing. I mean, there were schools with 100 percent, like seven schools had 100 percent attendance. It was on the media and the news every day, but that helps. So, but now fatigue is the issue, like you point out, so we got a lot to do.
So did I hear you say we're busing these children?
No, I didn't say that. What I said is, we put a dollar amount to it, so that if and when that fatigue starts to kick in, we at least have some of that additional money being targeted towards not having hurt our attendance. So we, we have no district busing, no third-party busing yet. Right now, we have church buses that are picking up a few people from the start, and that's only about 10 people. And the churches have agreed to do that for the next month or two. But, but we're budgeting and planning for picking some of that up when it starts, when the rubber meets the road towards hurting our attendance and our accreditation.
I think this is going to be a very big issue with the community. And I want to know the very day we roll a bus to go pick these children up.
Right. There, I can tell you today that homeless transportation, as much as I don't want to broadcast it, you know, we made a commitment to reduce our homeless budget transportation, because it was a million dollars, and began to pick up students in those two districts through, through the bus riding maneuvers for homeless.
Right.
So, so there are buses in Riverview and Normandy for homeless students, but as far as non-homeless students, due to this, there's nobody on a bus. And DESI will, this was our conversation today with the deputy commissioner, and he called back immediately on it, DESI will ding us, or take points away on the credit, on the fuel efficiency gold star that Jim got for now the second, third year in a row. So, so to pick them up on Ferguson-Floreson buses with Hurst on the rating of efficiency and financially. So, so that's why, that's kind of, that's not an option. The only option that really sits is whether we do a third party, like special school district buses, or E.T., E.T., DOT, some contracted service, not our school district buses.
Well, I see the difference between homeless and, and these transfer students is, these parents have chosen us, they have a different option. You know, the district is, their home district is providing transportation.
Right.
So if they choose us, there's some responsibility that goes back to the parents and the family. We're more than willing to educate all the kids, but they have got to honor the system too. I mean, you make choices in life, you know, that's what it is. So, yeah, I think, I think the community can, can respect that, but I think they're going to have a big problem if they see a bunch of Ferguson-Floreson buses running around Lilac, you know, I really do.
So just for clarification, clarification purposes, we have the buses going to Normandy and Riverview for the homeless transportation.
Small degrees, yes.
But we are not picking up any kids that are part of the transfer program.
That's right, that's right, that's correct.
And currently, the $500,000 that is budgeted on contingency basis for that has no revenue source other than us. There's no, no one else who's said, let's take that tab off, there's no...
That's true.
And that's not really a budget, and that, that was just an anticipated cost.
It's an anticipated cost.
Sure.
Right. So it's not been spent, anticipated cost. It has no revenue source other than us and the money for tuition that transfer students are supposed to bring with them. So, so, which is supposedly ours too now, so it's just us.
So that's really supposed to be tuition, but not transportation?
Tuition, no, that's, that's right. You're 100 percent correct.
Any further discussion on the annual secretary of the board report? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Insurance premiums, Ms. Madrusi.
Okay. Normally, I'm up here giving you all bad news, and I'm happy to report that I have good news for you with our health insurance premiums. The health insurance committee met on July 26, 2013, with myself and my benefits department, and also J.W. Tarrell, who is our benefit consultant. And our benefit consultant provided the following information to us and to the health insurance committee. And you really can't see that, I've got a, so I made it bigger. All that stuff that you just saw just kind of shows the revenue and expenditures that were associated by quarter. And so, as you can see, the first, our first, our plan year starts October 1, and it goes through September 30. So our quarters follow, these quarters follow our plan year. In the quarter of 2012, we came in with a surplus of $516,000, opposed to revenue versus the expenditures that we put out. And the revenues come from the premiums that the district, you know, pays, and then employees pay for families. In January through March, it was a surplus of $259,000. And then in April through June, it was $892,000. However, that's kind of misleading, because our teacher payroll in May, we pay the teachers five checks on the last day of school, the last term throughout the summer. So with those five checks, we take out the deductions with those five checks. So that $892 is inflated, that's actually got summer costs, summer revenue included in it. And then, so then in July, it's anticipated that we'll have a deficit of $542,000, because we're not bringing in any money from the teachers during those months. So anyway, we had a really good year this year. And so, again, this is revenues and expenditures, and I've got another slide to show. This is experienced by year. So in the 2009, 2010 school year, we net, we had a deficit of $1 million. In 10-11, we had a deficit of $342,000. 11-12, we actually had a surplus of $1.4 million. And then in 12-13, they're projecting a $1.1 million surplus. Now, J.W. Tarrell does a lot of different school districts and a lot of different people besides school districts, and they said that our claims experience was very unusual. For the last two years, they said, this is very highly unusual, that we really, really, really had two really good years. And they can't explain it, and I'm sure that people are sick, but maybe we just didn't have the tragic sicknesses that we've had in the past. And so, they said, you know, to be cautious, you know, that these are really good years, but next year the bottom could fall out, you know, so, but they did recommend that, and let me keep going further with this. So the total amount, we have a proprietary fund, and what that is, is we've got the general fund, the special fund, the capital fund, and the debt service fund. We also have this proprietary fund where it's our savings account for our health insurance account. So all of the transactions, for our health insurance transactions, all of the bills that are paid come out of the proprietary fund. And so, we were able to move $1.1 million into our proprietary fund this year, which brought the medical proprietary fund balance up to $5.4 million, which is a very healthy balance. And then our dental fund, we were able to move money in and bring it up to 530, actually it was a wash, and it remained at $537,000. So our total amount that we've got to pay for medical and dental in the proprietary fund is $6 million, and that is really a good balance. So very pleased with that. We are able to, we'll be able to not increase our rates this year and be able to, you know, because we've got such a healthy balance. So basically, we just kept the rates the same, you know, at 630. There's, we have two different plans, we have choice and then choice plus. And so, this is the choice plan, and as you can see, the rates remain the same, except for with the family plan, the family plan was out of whack a couple of years ago, and so the committee agreed to increase that premium by $25 per year for three years. This is the last year of that increase. So except for the family plan, all the other premiums remain the same. And then for the premium plan, which is our choice plus plan, those, those, those rates also stay the same. And then this is for the dental, so the dental, the rates again stays, it's $33.30 a month for our employees that the district pays. Now, with that being said, I had all the Sally Sunshine news, the healthcare reform act is coming down the pike, and thankfully, they did put off some of the changes that we have coming. But one of the changes that we're going to have to pay for this year, and these expenditures, this expenditure in particular, will come out of the proprietary fund. So for every person that we have in the district, every belly button that we have in the district, we are going to have to pay a dollar for them for this year. For next year, we'll have to pay due $2. It's called a PCORI fee, and basically, it's just a fee to help with research, with the support of...
Do you know the acronym?
I do actually know the acronym for that. It's an institute, it's called the... I do actually know the acronym for that. It's an institute, it's called the the Patient-Centered Outcome Research Institute for PCORI. Patient cover, Patient-Centered Outcomes Research Institute. And with this Affordable Healthcare Act, this institute is just supposed to, um, do research on, you know, the different diseases and cancers and things like that. So, we're, so every, everybody that has healthcare is going to have to pay this dollar to this institute. And then next year, it will go up to two dollars. So, next, so for this year, for two thousand fourteen, the district will have to pay two thousand five hundred dollars additional expense for, out of our proprietary fund. However, we do feel we've got enough of a balance to cover that. Then there's also going to be a research fee, um, that we don't have to pay this year, that, that fee has been pushed off. And it's sixty-three dollars for covered life per year, and they're going to estimate, and that fee does not hit our proprietary fund. That fee is actually going to be charged by, with your healthcare provider. So, whenever you pay your doctor, you'll be paying fees to them. However, the doctors are going to raise their rates because they have to pay these fees. And so, they're thinking that rates are going to go up an additional one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And then there's also a medical device tax, and when you think of medical device, devices, you think of MRI machines and big things. But apparently, um, our consultants said it could be something like a tongue depressor. And so, though there's going to be a tax on tongue depressors and any kind of mandates, things like that. So, the hospitals are going to raise their rates to cover this device tax, which will probably cost an additional one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, they're stating, in, in quarters. And that all will indirectly affect our proprietary fund with the claims that are paid out. Um, the employer mandate was delayed by a year, which, which now we will not have to do this, to have to provide insurance until the year two thousand fifteen. And, um, one of the good things, I guess, that came about this is that the out-of-pocket maximum that you pay will now be applied, I'm sorry, the co-pays and deductibles that you pay will now be applied to your out-of-pocket maximum. So, anytime you pay a deductible or a copay, that will go right to your maximum, to, to the maximum amount that you have for insurance. So, anyway, we are recommending that, um, there are no increase of, of the rates for this year.
Motion accept.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Martinez and seconded by Mr. Kieber to accept insurance premiums. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same, same sign? Pose same sign? Motion carries. I get it out. Defeasance of general obligation bonds.
Right, now you have some more good news. Um, the debt service fund is utilized to make principal and interest payments on outstanding general obligation bonds. An analysis of the fund balance indicates that the district is in a position to reduce a portion of its outstanding debt. A cash defecence is a method by which excess funds in the debt service account can be retired, used to retire outstanding bonds. So, basically, we're going to make a payment and pay down some of the outstanding debt that we currently have. Um, we've, the administration has submitted a resolution to the board for the defecence and reduction prior to maturity of a portion of the district's outstanding two thousand twelve general obligation bond. Um, that defecence amount that we're wanting to pay down is one point three, one one three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we're recommending...
Second. It's moved by Mrs. Hogseth and seconded by Mr. Martinez that we accept the defecence of general obligation bonds. Any discussion?
And what is, what's the actual net savings?
The net saving, Lorenzo, are you up there still?
Yes, I am. It comes to about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year through the call date, call date is two thousand.
Hundred and ten thousand a year through...
Through the call date.
Twenty twenty-one.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's Lorenzo, what I heard.
Yes, I, I remember.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign? Motion carries. Well, thank you for all that good news.
Okay.
Oh, one more, one more.
Don't let me go yet.
One more, I'm sorry. It's late. Benefit consultant services.
Each year, the district contracts with the following services for the self-insurance, health, dental, and life programs. Um, this, this consultant service monitors our claim experience, calculates our reserves, computes insurance rates for health, dental, and life coverages. They recommend plan changes, they review provider service contracts, and they provide the consulting services, like, for instance, right now, we're going through this big, um, healthcare act, and they are providing services to us to make sure that we're following all the regulations and staying, um, current about everything. The district, district did object issue an RFP to select a benefit consulting service to be retained for a three-year period with annual evaluations made of its services. A copy of a bid request, proposal submitted by the three vendors, and an evaluation summary are provided in our packet. After review of the proposals, administration recommends awarding the contract to J W Terrell for the period October first, two thousand thirteen through September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
It moved, we award the contract to J W Terrell.
Second. It's moved by Ms. Hogseth and seconded by Mr. Martinez. Is there any discussion?
Uh, let's talk about their fees because, um, I know they're charging a base fee for their administrative services. And, um, how much are they charging as a percentage of the total volume of our plan?
That's a good question.
I know they're also getting money, a percentage.
They're charging, it's, it's three dollars and six cents per employee per month. Um, and also, these insurance companies get commissions from the insurance from, like, United Healthcare and places like that. So, it's hard to say, I mean, they, they're saying that their cost would be three dollars and six cents per employee per month. However, after the commissions, we will, we probably will not pay this fifty-five thousand dollars. This year, we paid thirty-six thousand, twenty-three thousand dollars.
So, they, the commissions they get...
They reduce our fees.
Reduce our...
That's correct. And, and most all, um, benefit consultants do that, not just the ones we select or would like to select.
Because if not, they would be, maybe I'm oversimplifying, sorry to steal your line, Mr. Kieber. Um, but if not, they would be working for us and making more money by causing us to spend more money. Is that right?
Correct.
And that would be a benefit?
Correct.
That would not...
Did we manually send out RFP requests to the number of companies in the St. Louis area?
We, we actually posted it in, we Googled to try to find out, we tried to find other companies that provide these services, and we ended up putting it in the Post-Dispatch and the, um, St. Louis American, and we also had it on our website. And we had three, three people respond.
So, we did reach out to other companies?
Yeah. We tried. I mean, we Googled it for, to try to find these services, and we really couldn't find anything. So, we ended up putting it in the paper, and apparently, um, they have people that actually watch the paper to, to look for these types of...
Did we, did we reach out to other institutions, school districts, universities, et cetera, that would use similar services and see what they do?
They did not. That's a good idea.
Did we notify J W that we're sending out to RFP, or did they find out the same way everybody else did?
They, well, they knew because we work with them every, we had just been there, like, we'd go like once a month and meet with them on this horrible healthcare. So, they do know that we were going out for an RFP. Their contract, we currently have them, their contract is expiring. And we did tell them that we were going to be having to offer bid.
How many years have we had?
I believe we've had them for three years. We, it was a very, it, we actually had somebody else who moved to J W Terrell. Now, I'm trading on dangerous territory, but I believe we've had J W Terrell for two years.
For how long?
I believe for two years, but...
I think, I think it's only been two years because I, I remember we had this discussion when I was on the board, so it couldn't be three years.
We had it last year.
We did have them last year, yes.
We were at Berkeley Middle, if I remember correctly.
We did have them last year. I, I don't know if we had them a year before, though. I, I think it was somebody else that they moved to J W Terrell.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign? Motion carries.
And I did want to say that this fee does come out of the proprietary fund. It does come out of the proprietary fund and not the general fund.
Thank you again.
Thanks.
Number twenty, declaration of surplus equipment drivers' education simulators. Dr. Chidali.
Good evening. I am unfortunately a master of a new, we're not able to make you try, your permission, I present items. I'm very happy to say that I'm here to save money on this particular item. I'll be spending that in the next few minutes real quick. And this particular item is regarding, uh, door, door precision system, which are our drive simulation units. And the ones that we are planning on declaring surplus to the, the Board of Education, or the one in the, in the metro high school and metro South Berkeley. There are about twenty-five units. Uh, these units, they are not being utilized at this time, and we are forced to pay maintenance fee on them, uh, which is the total amount of twelve thousand dollars per year we pay for maintenance. Consequently, due to lack of usage, we request Board of Education to allow us to declare a surplus, not declaring surplus. We'll be able to either sell them to government agencies or to the highest bidder.
I move.
I second.
It's moved by Mrs. Hogseth and seconded by Mr. Shpo that we declare the driver's education simulator surplus. Any discussion?
I have a question. My question is, if we aren't using them, all right, we don't use them this year, and would we have to put, do maintenance on them if we decided, do we have to do maintenance every year if we're not using them? Can we wait and do the maintenance when we're ready to use them again?
That is correct. That would be an option that we could certainly exercise. Nevertheless, due to lack of utilization and the space they occupy, it's, and they are extremely old, these devices, they're beyond...
They're extremely expensive too, if we decide we want to buy them again and put something back into place, it just...
And again, it's a technology device, and as time passes, their value depreciates with the same.
The, uh, to give you a little bit of history on, on these machines, I know they're approximately fifteen years old. I don't know the exact date, but that would be pretty close. Uh, Dr. Shear was superintendent when we purchased them. They were about seventy-five dollars per, seventy-five thousand dollars per school to purchase them. Do you have an estimated value of what we would get for them?
Again, it's purely guess unless we put it through bidding process, but by all means, we'll be any close to that.
And, uh, I know that the ones in North, the ones we're keeping, were, were in excellent shape. I don't know what the, the condition of the, of the others were, but we have, for some reason, have decided to abandon driver's education at, at the high school level at this point, other than through community school. It, it's always been a, at least at North, was always a solid course, it always had full numbers. And all of a sudden, it has not. Since driver's education retired, it, it went away. And, uh, so, uh, I guess, the bigger question is not whether we declare surplus, is do we, do we want to offer driver's education to our students? That's, that's the bigger question here.
Yeah, and I think that was my question. I'm assuming the answer is no.
Obviously, for selling the equipment.
Well, I, that's, I just...
But do we, as the board, want to have driver's education in, in the buildings?
Um, yeah, that's a different question.
It is a different question.
I think it's a very valuable class to, to provide to our students. It was said earlier that, that when we were talking about it in the community schools, as far as insurance rates and as far as safer, safer drivers. And I've always thought that represents a very important class.
From an administrative standpoint, um, it's not a, an accreditation area, it's not a tested area, it's not a priority with regard to anything for state accountability. And when resources are tough, um, it's good to reallocate those funds towards math, uh, towards English, math, science, social studies. Um, second thing is certification for, takes a special certification, and there's not many certified people, which was part of the issue with the retiree, uh, from the other school. Um, after Ned left, he was certified, no one else took this test to get certified to teach him. Um, so, when times are tough, the funds are tough, this is not one of the core areas. Um, so, administration is thinking that it's a good compromise to still offer for those who are willing to pay for it through community education or scholarship, and some of which we do do. But, um, and then having parochial and neighboring school districts pay, because we have had Normandy come, not Normandy, we've had Hazelwood students pay us to come take our class through community ed, so it could be a revenue generator, but at the same time, not have us spend funds away from the core areas.
And, and I agree with that, and I understand that, but the times are tough now, but hopefully down the road, they're not going to be tough. So, how valuable is the storage space where they're staying? Do we, do we need that storage space to put something else in the place of these simulators?
They're not, they're, well, they're working. If you're asking, is it better to keep it in stores than to sell them? I guess, we, we've had limited storage spaces in the district.
Oh, everybody has. It's like a closet, you...
Throw stuff in, you know. Uh, the other thing though is, if we were going to buy more simulators, they would be better, new improved simulators. McClure-Narf had a simulation for the text, don't drive and text thing that A T and T and John Sundak brought. And that machine was a quite different machine than this one. It had virtual, uh, flat-screen DVD with real simulated video games. And this can't touch that. So, if we were going to really do driver's ed, those are what we would get. And it would be, and it would be cheaper than seven, five thousand dollars. It would be about five thousand to ten thousand per item. Uh, I set it, and then there's some YouTube, someone's sitting in there, and, um, that's, so, it would probably be to our advantage to get rid of this, to get even new ones if we wanted to expand it, the new ones that A T and T brought in, which is on the YouTube video. I think one of you might have came to do that too, at somebody else's...
And there's, yes, so obviously, the space has always been of an issue in our district. There was a family doing renting storage to store some of our equipment in there. And, uh, you know, many of our programs, they always look for space. Uh, to make the long story short, obsolete equipment, they're taking space, uh, request this for the commercial surplus they passed.
Any further discussion? Motion, uh, in favor, all, everyone say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign?
Aye.
Ms. Hogseth voted aye. Home and elementary aluminum steps, ADA ramp, and landing.
Uh, there is currently a, a modular classroom located at Home Elementary School, which is in need of replacement of, um, aluminum sets of steps, handrails, and landing at the south side of the, the classroom, as well as the ADA ramp, handrails, landing of the north side of this modular classroom. The, uh, these modular classrooms, these, currently, they are completely corroded, no longer repairable. We had to repair them for years. We requested to receive based from different, four different vendors, we received from two of those locations, uh, two of those companies, which the lowest number was J M, J M Mobile Modular LLC. Once they arrive and assemble and we install them, we currently request that the Board of Education authorize to attempt to award the contract to J M, J M Mobile Modular.
Motion's...
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Martinez and seconded by Mr. Kieber. Motion to accept the home and elementary aluminum steps and ADA ramp and landing. Any discussion?
Just a question of information, how long will we have a modular classroom at Home and Elementary?
This one, I, as far as I know... This one, as far as I know, we purchased in the year two thousand and two.
Two thousand and two. Do we have modular classrooms at any of our other sites? Yes?
So it's actually being used as a classroom? I know it's different than this, because we're here for the ramp, but is it being used for classrooms, or is it...
Music for classroom. Yes.
Music for classroom.
Music for classroom, that's how I look.
That is correct. It's an elegant way of calling it. It's true.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of building aluminum steps in the modular classroom at Holman Elementary? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side? Two steps. Two thousand thirteen Dump Truck Purchase.
On July twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen, at one p.m., facilitated the party to receive an open sealed bid for two thousand thirteen Ford Dump Truck. Again, emphasize the two thousand thirteen model, not two thousand fourteen model. And this includes the trading of a two thousand GMC Dump Truck. The bid was for a Ford Dump Truck, due to the fact that GMC is no longer manufacturing small Dump Truck. There are the four different vendors we contacted, contacted them, they received the packages, however, only one was submitted back to us. That was from Dave Sinclair Ford in an amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars, minus the trading of sixty-seven hundred fifty dollars. This is an amount reasonable, Sinclair Ford is an amount reasonable and within our budget. The last Dump Truck that we used was purchased was the year two thousand nine for sixty-seven thousand dollars. The two thousand GMC being replaced has extensive frame corrosion, and that's due to the fact that it, we use it for plowing, snow, carrying all the rock, mulch, it's really being completely utilized. At this time, we would like the Board of Education authorize superintendent about what the contract to Dave Sinclair for that amount of sixty-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars.
So moved.
Second.
A move by Mr. Ebert, and seconded by Mrs. Hogshead. Any discussion on the Dump Truck?
I'm alarmed that there's only one bid that came in. Why would someone want to sell a Dump Truck?
We had an extremely good deal. They do not want to sell two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, they have a much higher cost than they wanted to do, and this particular Dave Sinclair, and I can let you explain, but they're going to lend it because of the relationships that we have with them.
Yeah, I talked to the other dealers, and Dave Sinclair was, the vehicle has to be ordered by the sixteenth of this month, and because after the sixteenth, the only the fourteen, two thousand fourteen models can be purchased, and Dave Sinclair was the mortgage bottom on a limb, and placed the order for this truck, assuming that it is approved by the board. And if it is not approved, he will eat the cost of the truck. And the other dealers were not willing to take that chance.
So you did reach out, and that actually was important?
Yes, yes.
Any further discussion? Again, it's a one-bid situation, which makes me a little nervous, that we don't have competitive bids on, you know, for other reasons. The other question is, did it have to be a Ford? I mean, I've seen a lot of bids written for a Ford and says or equal, where other people then bid on it. Is there, is there a reason, did we do that, or did we not?
I did not, but I did check comparison pricing. Internationals are approximately ten thousand dollars more. GM Chevy, you know, does no longer, maybe smaller Dump Truck, which pushes us towards only a Toyota or a Ford. So we're, and we have a, the Ford Dump we purchased in oh-nine was a Ford, and so we purchased the exact same truck.
And my only other question is, one that came up earlier, and it's basically, what happens if we don't buy this? Other than what Dave has to eat, but I mean, on our end, what happens if we don't buy this new truck?
Potentially, we currently contract part of the district, you know, for snow plowing, and if this truck became unusable, either before then or during that time, we would be contracting more services, and depending on how much snow we get, it could basically pay for itself in one year versus contracted services.
My question is, could this truck be fixed? As a guy who drives an eighty-nine Suburban, I know you can, you can, you can get a lot of, lot of repair for five thousand dollars. How's that? Versus, you know, my big theme tonight is the timing of all this. The public spoke about our money and expenditures. Do I think you can drive a truck forever? Heck, no. But wow, I mean, you know, we're not paying our people and our raises and things like that, and we're buying Dump Trucks, you know? I don't know. You know, that's, that's just something that I bring up when I say, you know, I'm a repairman by trade, and I know you could get that thing working and repaired, and probably get four or five more years' service out of it for five thousand or whatever. I don't know what the cost would be, but it would be a lot less than seventy thousand dollars. And I question the timing of it more than anything. It's not, not the truck, and we all have to have things to, you know, operate around here, but even to what you just said, well, we don't even know how long it'll last, but you're kind of saying it still runs, still usable. So I'm probably going to be inclined to vote no on this.
If I could make a comment there, the extensive frame deterioration is a major, major, major problem. It's not just fixing a vendor. And we've had thirteen years of use out of this truck, that is correct. And again, this... Sometimes you just have to do it.
And a couple of variables with your permission, I'll just explain. This particular truck is, it's really for heavy usage, you know, handles, rocks, and debris, and trees, and limbs, and so forth. There's scrap, and we use that, which is a heavy load. We use it every winter for the purpose of plowing the snow, which really causes a lot of corrosion. Currently, we can get nearly seven thousand dollars in trading for it. So the longer we keep it, we acquire less for trading, obviously. And we are just concerned that if this occurs right now, we're getting also a good deal because of getting two thousand thirteen model at the same time.
And again, if we could swap seats, I hope you could see my concern.
Yes, sir.
You've got a public that really sent a loud message to me on this board anyway, and I'm just, you know, hey, even if we got one more year out, I question the timing of it. Again, nothing against you guys. I mean, when you put this on here and did the bidding process, it was well before the, we got the message from the public, so it's nothing against the plant department or anything. So I hope you're not taking offense at any of my comments. I'm just really questioning the timing of everything.
No, I definitely understand, and these are the things that we have anticipated, included in our bond issues, replacement.
This is bond...
This is bond money.
That is correct.
We've cut and cut and cut on general revenue, and so we're going to continue to stay lean on that. So we've been doing that since, well, for a while, so we have this different pot of money. And so I want to be clear to the community, because it's the same confusion community has why you're buying new furniture when you're making cuts to, or asking for more money. It has to be reiterated that we made a promise to the community to spend six to seven million every year on bond money for renovation of keep, and every news of stuff that are buying acceptable.
And again, it's not as if, as if, don't buy the truck, then you can hire another teacher with that.
That's right. If we don't buy the truck, we cannot use that on staff or salaries, so it cannot go to increased raises, and it cannot go to increased class houses. And we would have to bring you back another item to vote on that we don't necessarily need, or, you know, there's a laundry list of needs, and so, yeah, prioritize list, and so we just go to the next thing. So it would be a timing issue for the next item, too.
If we were to maybe this thing for a while, what would a two thousand fourteen, how much more is a two thousand fourteen than a two thousand thirteen?
Yeah, approximately three to five thousand.
Thank you. Approximately three to five thousand, but then you could also get more people to bid on it. Is that correct?
No, this is correct.
Yes, sir.
So we could have more of a competitive bid situation than we have now?
I have to ask the board for clarification from the board. Is the goal to get bids or save money? And because if you, if you ask, if you, if you send an invite, as I think Rob pointed out, to please bid on this, and three businesses say, we don't want your business, and then the board makes a decision to not get something the district needs because three businesses said, we don't want to send a bid to it because they were reached out to. I just want to make sure that...
If they were reached out to because the timeline was short, I'm saying that once you go to the two thousand fourteen, you don't have that short timeline, and you might get a more competitive bid. That was the reason given for not bidding on it, is because it has to be ordered by, by Friday. Correct?
But what about our reputation? We've already, Dave Sinclair's already stuck his neck out for us, and so in putting out a bid for, in two thousand fourteen, if we wait and do it even a year from now, will they say, well, you know, they did this to Dave Sinclair, I don't know that I want to go ahead and order something for them. And I'm not saying, don't, don't get it because we want to say Dave Sinclair, because that's not my point. But my point partially is our reputation, and do we, if we need it, money-wise.
Just need to mention that two thousand thirteen model that we are getting is brand new, the same as two thousand fourteen model. That's why, but inherently, we are getting a better deal. Having, if we go later for two thousand fourteen, I'm not sure it will be coming to you with a lesser amount.
Yeah, the problem is, you could have seventeen bids, and they're all five thousand dollars more than this.
Plus, the truck will be a year older, and they're not going to give you success dollars for it, if only we have now.
Because practically, if you look, the two thousand and nine was only eighteen hundred dollars less. That's four-year-old, in a four-year period, that's a pretty fair price. I mean, it's very equivalent to what we spent in two thousand and nine.
That is correct.
And so there's certainly nothing exorbitant about this price that's involved in here.
Look, look, obviously, speaking only for myself here, but one of the circumstances, I think what was done was, was probably a really good job of getting a bid price and getting the lay of the land. I think there are some subtle points here, though, that need to be addressed. One, Mr. President made the point, you don't have to write the RFP for a Ford, right? So I think in general, very broadly speaking here, the RFPs sometimes, if we're making decisions before we send out the RFP, right, of what we've, then we're pigeonholing, you know, the opportunity, so somebody may come in with something else. That may not afford in this case, but I think in general, all RFPs need to consider that point first. The other thing is, is, you know, to Dr. McCoy's question, I don't know if that's entirely secular, do you want to have lots of bids or save money? That's like saying, well, do you, do you want to score lots of runs or win the baseball game? I mean, you, you win the baseball game by scoring lots of runs, right? So you get better prices by getting competitive bids. So I don't think it's, I don't, those are not mutually exclusive. I mean, it's a good thing to get bids. It's not always possible, but I wouldn't entirely agree with the point that you're saying there.
Well, there's a few pieces of it. I mean, every time we, we, the board has made it clear that you want to bid on a three-year cycle, everything. I think that's the first statement. And every time we bid, there's man-hours that can be calculated for every bid, which has dollar values, and per diem, I know for myself, which is maybe different than them, but about two hundred dollars for a cabinet member per diem, and a hundred dollars for per diem for an extra hour to call somebody, an extra hour to do a bid, and an extra hour to tweak a line, and the cost to do fifty bids, three times every year, you know, it's three hundred times, and then that's going to have added costs, which you're losing just a bit more, the hours you did for the bidding of legal services. It took time to go through that, and all that just takes time. So, so the fewer bids, the more, if you say, there's a cost of staff hours to do the job, but then when you put a bid out there and nobody responds back, which has been the case for car companies, and you call and they don't respond, it becomes a question of do you want the business or not? We do step forward as a company and say, we're loyal to you, we'll give you a try. And if it's local, too, we say we want to support local people. You know, right now, North County, Northwest Chambers mad at Ferguson, Floris for not being friendly to the businesses, Northwest Chamber of Commerce. They say that we don't want to extend our service to them, that we won't be cozy or friendly to them because we, because of some past practices. Well, this is, this is an instance in which, I mean, it's political when someone says that, and they say, we don't want unfurtry, we just want a shot, and then when we stick ourselves out, don't shoot us in the foot because we're North County, and we don't treat each other like that. I mean, that's the reputation they're telling me that we have from a previous administration that established that, and so...
I'm going to try to keep the two points separate here, really quick, though, because you're mixing issues. The first issue you said was about, about, we're talking about getting bids, right? And then you brought up the subject of taking something to bid. So those are two different things. The activity of getting bids and making sure that there's competitive bidding process happening wherever possible is one thing. Making a decision about bidding and then the relative cost to that, it's related, but that's not the same thing. So if you have a critique on the board relative to making the decision to bid everything every three years, we need to have a different discussion.
That's not...
Because that's a different discussion. So...
That's not what I said.
Hold me out.
There was no critique of the board for bidding. I said, the board asked for it, and we're doing it.
And you said, but you, but...
But when somebody doesn't comply to the bid...
Because there was cost associated with it. And your, your insinuation is that, that there's a bid happening to save cost, but really, it's not saving any cost because of the labor cost that's related, which may very well be true. However, I've never seen any numbers to support that insinuation. So if we want to go through, if the staff wants to take more time and tell us how much it costs to write an RFP or to have a bid, then do it. But, but until then, it's just conjecture.
Well, it's not, it's real money, but it's unknown. It's unknown, it's unknown, and that's different than conjecture, because it means it's not possibly true, but it's real, and you bid.
Well, no, it's definitely money happening. Absolutely, I agree with you. And there's probably some cases where we're not even saving money. That's probably true.
That's...
But it's conjecture to say that for fact, that there are bids that shouldn't happen from an economic sense. Now, obviously, there are other reasons, transparency and global over vendors and all that stuff.
If you are asking for that data, and Larry does a lot of the bidding from the legal aspect, I know that Larry put in thirty hours towards the legal bid. I know that there was twenty hours put in towards the strategic claim RFP that was pulled back down, which is the next subject matter to get further clarification, and that's just his per diem. We can get you that for each person, and the number will be so huge that in many instances, it's more large than you think, and it's real dollars. So that's, I mean, but that is...
It may be working anyway.
On other things that student-related, in most cases, not necessarily bid. I mean, Larry Giroux would be working on issues that are staff-related or accountability-related or double-checking or communication-related, but not necessarily bid-related. His roles would include working with the union to make sure the policies are followed, but, you know, RFPs have become a larger role because we... But, you know, RFPs have become a larger role because we have to make sure it's done, done quickly, done legally and, uh, and then refined for clarification. So that has real money monetary value that's huge and that is per diem. Uh, but my point is that when we've done the process, which this group did do, and they did ask for Fords, uh, but when, and, and there's unions supported Ford companies versus a foreign car company, which, you know, has some rationale, it's some good political will locally from the unions, North County Labor Union, uh, because if you drive a foreign car to some labor union places, they say, get this foreign piece of crap off of our land or off of our property. And we have a union person here that vouched that, who want to ask that. But the point is that once you do a bid and someone doesn't respond back to it, I feel like we, as a district, have done our due diligence because we did the process, but we can't control what a business does back in response.
Totally agree. Yeah, and I'm going to vote for this because I think the process was excellent.
Before we go.
That's why I was trying to say, I'm trying to keep these points separate. Bidding, getting bids is one thing. The board deciding, deciding to make sure that we always get bids is a little bit difficult. And so I definitely think we need to examine.
I agree with you. I did agree with you.
The cost.
It was the Paul Moore statement that made me say, that is the goal to get a response to the bid or is it to do the bids? Because we had, because Paul said, my issue is that I don't see anything to compare it with. And I said, we did the bid and we reached out. So because there was no comparisons, it's their fault, they didn't do that. Uh, but we did the process. That's why I said that. And I said, it's multiplying because there are more bidding going on.
But you would admit that it's easier in our position. We, I wasn't on the phone with Dave Sinclair, Lou Hughes or anybody else. Right? So, so I don't know. So you would agree that it's easier to make the decision if you have those.
I do agree it's easier.
All, all things being equal, best case scenario.
Is to have more than one.
Yeah.
Is to have more than one best case in, in.
But it doesn't always work that way. And I think in this case, in this particular case, um, it's clear that, to me anyway, that this was a solid process.
The process was followed, but we also.
It's not always.
What guys, I call for the question because we're way off the discussion on whether we should buy.
Well, I think we're on something actually much more important.
We are on something important, but it's not following the rules of, we need to stay on discussion. We can, I agree, go ahead and talk about this, but not, we need to vote on it.
Okay, before we vote on it, I want to make a point.
Questions being called?
I'd like to make a point. And that is that the most important thing in this issue hasn't really been discussed. And that is extensive frame deterioration to the point of being unsafe to operate. If we have a vehicle that's unsafe to operate, we need to replace it. Now, I had a vehicle that had an unsafe frame. I had it for twenty years. I'm very much like Mr. Eber. I keep my vehicles for a long time. I got rid of it less than a year ago because I had a frame that couldn't possibly be fixed. It was dangerous and I refused to drive it any longer. If this is the case, we need to get rid of this vehicle. That would be my table.
Questions being called? All those in favor of accepting the two thousand thirteen dump truck purchase, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
Mr. President, before we move on to number twenty-three.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Before we move on to number twenty-three, I have a, a question of clarity. Is, and I don't know, I'm just asking. Can we move the strategic plan discussion to a, a work study session when we have more time? It's ten thirty at night. I think this is about, this is more discussion than we really have right now. And I think we would get more out of it if we were able to do it in a work study session when it was already in topic. And I don't know if legally we can do that since we've already approved the agenda and that's what I'm asking.
If I have a motion to table it, and I have support for that motion, yes.
I move to table. I second his motion.
I make a motion to table item number twenty-three, strategic plan.
For a, a study session that we could have possibly on the.
Soon.
In the calendar here, second twenty-eighth. For the twenty-eighth, I'll do the twenty-eighth.
Well, we can decide the date after we decide when you do this.
Aye. Motion to, uh, there's motion on the floor to table the strategic plan discussion for a later date. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion is, motion is tabled. Item number twenty-four.
Now, now go ahead and do your date, but I didn't, if we couldn't do it on the, on the vote. I would like to do a date, please.
We have the, possible, the twenty-eighth is, seems to be, have the twenty-first, is that?
What day are we gonna have?
That's a Wednesday. Weekend today? I'm committed. September fourth?
We can't do anything the next two weeks.
What's that?
We can't do anything the next two weeks.
For the next two weeks, you're welcome.
It'll be on a Wednesday? No, there are other nights.
It could be on a Saturday.
All right, so the twenty-first is out because Mr. Schreiber can't go. Right, Paul?
It can be other times too, because the Tuesday work, I mean, you what?
Tuesday is the twentieth?
Monday I would be available. I'll be leaving Tuesday, next week.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
As of next week, I'll be leaving town on Tuesday.
The twentieth, he'll be gone for how long?
Uh, through the weekend, probably.
All right, can we do it the Monday, the nineteenth?
Monday, the nineteenth works for me.
Scott?
You have objections?
I don't know.
Where's your calendar?
At home. Because this was on the agenda, so I figured we were covering it tonight. So I wasn't anticipating it to occur, but I apologize. My fault.
Get your iPhone. Uh, potentially the nineteenth?
Nineteenth, the way. Is this coming with it?
What time?
Six AM. Six AM?
What time? Six thirty, seven?
Can we do six thirty? That'll give us time to dinner with the family and.
Six thirty?
P M, right.
What's that? P M, I'm A M, P M. What you want to do, seven AM, one, I don't care.
No, I gotta take Jacob to school.
Six thirty on the making?
That's why I'm gone all the time.
Does that work for you, Doctor?
Is there an issue? Can we do it? Is it helpful if we move it a little earlier?
Yeah, early, early.
Can we do six, so that we even get into dinner?
What time's your dinner?
Breaking western stew is one of the people I report and, um, I've got a phone to be about. So seven thirty when we start, hot meals at six thirty, dinner at seven thirty.
We won't be done by seven thirty?
I get there eight or eight thirty, I don't find it's only a couple of hours.
I, I think for this stage of what we're doing, it really obviously didn't take that long.
Yeah, I think it'll take more than that.
I don't think so.
Okay, so.
It's not doing the work.
Yeah, and we're not doing the strategy work.
Right, I know, but we're talking, I think it's.
Planting the.
So we could do that tonight?
So we're talking about six PM on Monday, the nineteenth?
I mean, if it's not going to take it a long time, let's do it tonight. I mean, I, you know.
Well, it's going to take an hour.
Too late now.
It's going to take an hour, I would think.
So this is nothing we have to vote on? No, okay. So, and we have a board secretary, right?
Right.
In case somebody can't make it. So, I don't see why, you know. Well, that's the biggest problem we always have, is getting together.
Nineteenth and six, does that work?
Send my calendar.
All right, yes, it'll work.
Nineteenth and six.
Make the commitment.
Project Labor Agreement. Should have received copies of a project labor agreement proposal from, or a policy from Hazelwood uh, in your emails, Dr. McCoy sent out. Project Labor Agreement is an agreement to hire trained, trained workforce, a skilled workforce. It allows, um, for typically the, the school districts such as Hazelwood, Rockwood, River, uh, River View Gardens, Afton, uh, House Springs and Bayless all have project labor agreements. Uh, it allows them to, uh, hire the, the trained workforce and to perform the work in a, in a safe manner, in a manner in which it's done correctly the first time, in a manner in which, uh, according to, to the people that I've talked to at Hazelwood, which Mr. Belman were still here, he had to take out, he could have talked better about it than I, in that it has actually saved them money on projects over the years in, in the fact that there aren't change orders at the end that, that increase the price. There aren't redos that they have to come back and, and, uh, fix somebody, either fix their own work or have other companies come in and fix their work or our maintenance guys have to come in and fix their work. So, um, what I would like to do tonight is, is have a small discussion on it, to have, uh, Dr. McCoy work with the attorneys to draw up a, a proposal for our district and then we would vote on that proposal. And, uh, our, our attorney, uh, Proctor and Ornsby are familiar with it through the Hazelwood School District. So it shouldn't, shouldn't be a very long process, it should be a fairly short process. This is for information only, it's not an action, so it can discuss. It was not brought up for action.
Well, personally, I'd like to hear the staff's, not tonight necessarily, but in that proposal or in that next discussion or whatever, I'd like to hear the staff's opinion of this because I, I don't, A, want a handcuff. Um, and, uh, and, and I want to make sure that, um, that they have, you know, we're telling them to get competitive bids and, and this limits who can bid legally. So I need, I think we need to be careful as to how we're, how we're doing this. And, uh, and I, and I would also caution against using the term, this, um, provides tr- trained employees. Well, it's a certain type of training that all union shops have that most non-union shops won't have. And let me say in full disclosure, you know, my father, may rest in peace, was a union man all his life, right? So I have deep respect for that and I understand it. But, um, but at the same time, it doesn't mean that hiring someone else, uh, that they're untrained, it just means that they don't go through that particular training that is, um, associated with union employees. And, and I'll, I'll close with this statement. Did, did the union employees build the Hazelwood school that's falling down the hill? Because I wonder if they got that one right the first time. So I, I just, I'm, I'm good, it's almost.
I'm, I'm thinking that the Hazelwood school is falling down the hill, it's more of an engineering problem than a construction problem. I, I, if I, if I, my information was correct on that one, they were told not to build it there anymore, got told to build it anyway. So that's, that's another story. I think that's an engineering and a, a civil problem rather than a, a building problem.
Right.
No penalty.
Right.
So Dr. McCoy, this document you had sent to us today. Can you get to the part, the meat of it, which is like, by state law, fifty percent of the project's cost? Three, four pages in, I don't know.
Right, that's, that's true. So today, first you had a copy of MSBA's recommended policy, uh, that was sent through there. And then we saw these notes from the MSBA about the laws. And, uh, and you're right, page three starts to detail, um, percentages. I, I would advise us reading this and then coming back to the MSBA room for some of these devices, but it's several pages, um, as soon as, you know, I mean, Larry, if you want to elaborate.
Well, can I, who's read this document?
I don't think.
This MSBA one?
Nope.
I don't think, I don't think anybody.
Skimmed it. I haven't read it deeply.
And it's up, it's up on the board and behind us, but, uh, Larry, if you, go ahead.
Mr. Jones, can I, can I come up and speak or? Mr. Jones is familiar with, I guess.
I know, is he allowed, or is he allowed to? Yeah, I'm happy to hear.
Especially, it's not a, no access.
Well, it's board discussion.
Right.
I'm not sure that it's audience discussion.
He, he, he came here on his own, he didn't, you know, I didn't, I didn't ask him to come here.
I would like to hear from the.
There you go.
I'm trying to make sure we don't break the law before we adopt another one.
Can you speak to us when it comes to the, the last fifteen?
That'd probably be a better time.
Sorry.
Uh, one other thing that you can, can do that we haven't discussed yet is that you can, uh, set minority participation rates in the project labor agreement to help, uh, make sure that the minority participation is, is, was in the construction projects.
But you could, you, you could set that anyway.
Right.
You could set that on your own, but we don't have anything that, that says that.
My, my, my only question is, have we had a problem with this? With our construction projects? Have we, have we had shoddy construction projects in the past? And is that our problem that we're trying to fix?
We don't build anything.
We had picketers and we needed jobs.
We haven't done much building in the past since, since, uh, Johnson Wallbach and.
And we had picketers that attacked.
And SB.
Didn't use labor.
It's been a while since we've done an construction project. Hopefully in the future, we, we look at the ABC plan, there's a B for building better buildings, so.
That's true, but I'm, I'm just saying in terms of our finan, in terms of our finances, I'm not sure that we're working on a problem that is going to rise its head in the next year or two.
I can just, I'm advised the board to just read the labor preferences. I mean, I could read it if you wanted me to, but I'm not going to be there to issue. But, but it's the top of page four, it's the prevailing wage, page five, those have the big legal, the large ramifications. I mean, of course, labor preference means you prefer labor, which has been pointed out already. Prevailing wage means that you have all fixed, well, it, it has a wage setting, setting amount by state statute. And then the very last page gives you like the real quick down and dirty for, um, for really everything that Missouri requires for construction processes that you can either do independent to a labor agreement or, or not. So, I mean, so I've just basically given you a, a skim version of what's most important from these documents by, by state statute. And that last page has all the statutes connected to it, um, line by line. So, but I, I, we were, I think we would love to entertain more discussion on it coming forward or even on the nineteenth, if you wish. This would be the, the solid time.
For me, I would love to hear, I would love to hear from Terry.
Definitely.
I would love to hear from Hazelwood or some other school districts that are having some place and their impact and pros and cons and, uh, I'm not for it, I'm not against it. I'm different at this point.
Right.
Um, and I just need more information. I, I appreciate this because the question, you know, came down to is. I appreciate this, because the question, you know, came down to if fifty percent of the cost of the projects being utilized by state funds, okay, well, that's a pretty broad term, what do you mean by state funds? Is it from the formula? Is that where it's coming from, or?
It can be grants or something.
So I mean, it's pretty broad.
It is broad.
And then, you know, with this, I know there's a cap, a dollar amount, I think that's what you...
Right, that's what I was referencing up there before.
So I, personally, I feel if everybody could take some time to read this, and schedule another meeting, another...
Another meeting.
Another time to where we can have other people here to have complete discussion.
Is there a reason why this couldn't wait until the next quarter?
This was for information only.
Yeah, so, yeah, we've got one scheduled.
That's right.
One a month.
Do we have to vote?
No.
No, it's for information only.
No. Well, it's ten fifty-five.
Oh, we don't have to vote in a minute, you've got five minutes.
Alright, let's hurry up.
We have to vote in five minutes.
Item twenty-five, as a maximum of fifteen minutes, has been provided for suggestions and/or questions from members of the audience. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board or request to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and limit their remarks to three minutes, and keep in with district policy forty fifty-nine, and personnel law speakers must refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable, and observe sunshine law and district policy forty fifty-four, forty fifty-nine. Board members will not respond to comments made or any public comments sectioned. The subject of the public comments will be noted in the minutes and addressed properly by the district. Ms. Dr. Graham?
Hello, to our wonderful superintendent and the most excellent board, and a beautiful secretary to all of you who are still here. I'm here to tell you that Judy Shaw, who's sitting over there, one of the respected educators and counselors in our wonderful district, and Doris Graham, and some other members of our beloved sorority, Alphafinam Sorority, which does give the Apple for the Teacher for Outstanding Educators. We were out early at the River View Gardens High School, welcoming the students and the faculty and the staff back to their home schools. We had our little shakers and everything, and of course, they didn't show us in our green and white. They showed a church group that came in a gray, and they came late, but anyway, that's okay. They did interview Judy, and she said some wonderful things about the students and the faculty at River View Gardens. The purpose was to let them know that they were still great, they're still wonderful, they still have wonderful things to offer to the community, and Judy was asking, now, who's the smartest kid on the block? Because I'm one who participated in our essay contest, et cetera, et cetera. Doris Graham, I was at the Westview Middle School, and I'm going to tell you this, I did not know how to get there, but somebody told me, and I went right past it, and I saw a school bus. And I made a U-turn, and I followed that school bus, and I was hoping, as it went down a side street that I'd never heard of before, that someplace in the horizon, there would be a school, and sure enough, there enough it was. The Westview Middle School, and there I was out there, seven thirty, welcoming the people, the children and everything, and this is my point, I went through all of this because... The conversation, you know, and I'm not supposed to say anything negative, it's not negative, it's just that I'm a forty-year educator. And I went through all the busing and everything, as a reading specialist, I had to sit from Clark School, which was right on Union Boulevard, all the way south to a school called Shepherd School in Wisconsin, where the white folks said, "We don't want any black kids coming over here," so the school district said it was public school, said, "Well, we'll send the black teacher over there, so it doesn't matter." So anyway, when I heard somebody say buses, buses, and the superintendent tried to make sure that you knew that only the homeless kids, you know, would be bused, and I had this homeless note, letter that I had to type when I get home at twelve midnight, and it says, "This letter is in support of blank who is attempting to pursue her college education. Currently, blank is homeless and should qualify for the Pell Grant, and any other available assistance," et cetera, it goes on. And I wrote it on, you know, a piece of scrap paper, because it was calling me that day. So anyway, I want to tell you this, when the children come, be kind, you know, like the superintendent was kind on TV. Please don't conjure up any negative things about busing, okay? As board members, you have to take the leadership in that, thank you.
Thank you, Morris.
I think, Mr. President, we should vote to extend.
So you're moving second?
Move that we extend.
I want to hear from the gentleman that was going to speak to us, and I asked him not to right now.
We need to...
Motion extend.
We did.
No, we didn't vote them.
No, but he made the motion.
Okay, motion's been made to extend.
And seconded.
A sector.
Mr. Eber.
Nay.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Schroeder.
Aye.
Mr. Hogshead.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Martinez.
Nay.
And Mr. Morris. Go ahead.
Aye.
It was a pleasure to be here tonight, you guys, I'd like to say, it's kind of dysfunctional to say this, but I do have kids in Hazelwood, Anfers and Floris, and I'm divorced, so I do see them quite a bit too. Try to wait it out with the apples and apples, but back to the, excuse me? Oh, Tim Jones. To make it short, you guys, I'm tired, just like everybody else is, I gotta put some kids to bed stuff, because I'm sure they're up after bedtime, but to make it real short, you guys, we push education as far as PLA agreements and stuff like that, and to make it real short, they always say, if your car breaks down, and you gotta get it fixed, and there's two guys that's gonna fix it, and one guy says, "My grandpa taught me how to fix cars," and you look over at the other guy, who says, "I went to a four or five-year, potentially a apprenticeship program," who are you gonna go get your car fixed by? I mean, it's common sense, education is where it's at. The safety, all, everybody's OSHA-trained, which not everybody's OSHA-trained, when you reach out to everybody. Your education is just a top-one priority, all the project labor agreements, they come in under budget, they come in on time or early, there's nothing but pluses out there. I hope you guys bring into this a little bit more, and I will be at the following meetings, and I am very open to questions. But like I said, I think it's a positive thing, as Hazelwood would have been got rid of a long time ago. Thanks for your time, you guys.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Or shall I say, good morning?
Morning.
Judy Ferguson Shaw, and I just want to thank the board for the hard work that you do every day. Dr. McCoy, you make us look good, and we appreciate your hard work. I come to the board meetings to hear what is going on, and I'm concerned, because I really wanted to hear the strategic plan, and now I need to know, and I know you can't answer me, is that gonna be an open session or is that a closed session?
It's open.
It is open. So, oh, thank you, Paula Duck, you said you could answer me if I asked the question.
He's trying to break all kinds of rules.
Is that what he's doing, in breaking rules? And then, the other thing is, I know that sometimes meetings go on and on, and you want to get home, because all of us want to get home, but it is difficult, if you have something on the agenda, if you decide that you want to table it for another time, in respect for all of us who set our calendars based upon what you have said on your agenda, if you decide that you're not gonna do it at this board meeting, maybe it would be better for me, because you don't ask me when it's the time for me to come back. You know, I just have to come at your time. Maybe it's best that you put it back on your meeting time, when you know the public is going to be here, and that is your second Wednesday of the month, so rather than come up with another time, and, you know, who can do yada, 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 put it back on your regular time, and that way I know I can be here. Thank you.
I have to talk, this is the only board meeting I can come to, which is part of my issue. So, my name is Melissa Fisher, I have three kids, preschool, first, fourth grade. I'm unable to do Wednesday nights ever, because I have a commitment that doesn't allow me to get out of it. I appreciate you are all the time is valuable, and I just wanted to encourage you, Dr. McCoy, you did some town hall meetings, which to me, I learned so much at those meetings, because you were talking about all the fun stuff about the district, but you got into some stuff that wasn't so fun, because you have to, but this is not really conducive to parent involvement, to be fair. I have three little ones that fortunately, for me, have a husband and sit there home and bed, so they can be a tool right now. So I would just encourage, and that may not include the whole board, but just some of those periodically as a parent, that was really helpful to me. And then, one more thing, I thought about all those kids from River View and Normandy starting the school, and I thought about my kids, and I thought, how scary for those parents to send their kids someplace where they may not be welcome. And I think it's kind of funny that you didn't hear all the hubbub, at least I didn't read all the hubbub, about them coming to Berbers and Floris, and I think that speaks a lot to us, but I also think they're our neighbors, and it isn't our job just to educate their children. We are in North County, what happens to them affects us, affects me, affects my home, it affects my community. I would love for us to be, and I wish I could tell you I knew how this could happen, maybe people far smarter than me, and I could just be a minion, but I would love to see us partner with those parents, instead of talking about how they're gonna get their kids to school, and instead of talking about, you know, it is a budget issue, it's a real issue, the busing issue is a real issue for us as parents. I would like to see us partnering, I heard you talk about church buses, I'd love to see us partnering with community resources, and not just always having to be a budget issue, number one, and use as parents. You know, I mean, we would love to partner with parents from River View or Normandy, and I can't speak for other parents, but, you know, if I can be a resource for those moms who send their babies to first and second grade in a school that, you know, you cross your fingers and hope that they're gonna be okay, I would love to do that. So I guess I come to it from the perspective of how can we make things parent-friendly, which I think you try to, but just those two perspectives, I wouldn't say, do with it what you will, but I'm a resource when it comes to that type of thing, and I know there are plenty of parents out there that would love to be a resource of that.
There's no further business?
I move the adjourned.
I need a motion to... Adjourned. Been moved in, adjourned to a closed session. Been moved and seconded, Mr. Spoh.
Mr. Eber.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Schroeder.
Aye.
Mr. Hogshead.
Aye.
Secretary of State.
Any further?
I already got an answer, you may ask. Mr. Morris?
Aye. He adjourned.